Good evening and welcome to the Providence City Council on this Thursday, November 6th. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Council President Miller?
Present.
Deputy Majority Whip Anderbois?
Present.
Majority Leader Espinal?
Present.
Senior Deputy Majority Leader Goncalves. Councilwoman Graves. Deputy Majority Leader Harris.
Present.
Councilwoman Peterson?
Present.
Council President Pro Tempore Pichardo?
Present.
Councilor Royas?
Present.
Councilwoman Ryan?
Present.
Majority Whip Sanchez?
Present.
Councilman Taylor is absent. Councilwoman Anna Vargas?
Present.
Councilman Oscar Vargas?
Present.
You have thirteen present and one absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This evening, the invocation will be given by Councilwoman Althea Graves. Will everyone please rise?
Say it in, we're gonna tear your kingdom down. Say it in, we're gonna tear your kingdom down. You've been building your kingdoms all over this land. But say it in, we're gonna tear your kingdoms down. Give an honor to God and everyone that's here in this house that is here to fight for the people of this city. We are here because we were selected by the members of each of our communities. We were selected to do the best that we possibly can for this community. With the Lord's help, I hope that each and every last one of us will continue to do that. I hope we will look into our hearts and see what is best for the city. I hope that we will stand up for those people that put us in this office. I hope that we will follow our hearts, our souls, and our minds. We cannot be following false prophets. We have a false prophet in the State House. Not the State House, I'm sorry, the White House. We have to, we have to stop all of this madness that is going on. We have to fight as long and as hard as we possibly can. We need to be the Lord's warriors. We need to be the people's warriors. We need to fight with every bit of strength and breath and everything inside of us. Because now we're looking around, we have people that don't know when their next meal is gonna come from. We have people that's worried about having healthcare. We have people that are losing their jobs. And we have people that we raise taxes on that don't know if they're gonna be able to keep their homes. So we need to keep on praying. We need to keep on searching and we need to search every corner of our hearts. And with all of our strength, we need to look to the Lord for guidance. And then we need to go out and work to make sure that these people do not be hungry. Go out there and be hungry. We need to make sure that our childrens are fed. We need to make sure that they have a roof over their heads. We need to fight, we need to fight, we need to fight. And with the Lord in our corner, we'll make it through this. He will not let us fail. Because if we fail, the city fails. So I am praying and hoping and looking to all of my colleagues to help give me strength and I will try to give you some too. We need to stand tall together and we need to have faith in each other. And we need to have faith in this city. I will fight for you. I hope you fight for me and we all fight for the people. In the Lord's name I pray. Amen, amen, and amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilwoman. Tonight, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilwoman Mary Kay Harris.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in principle, liberty, and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, item three. Item three is election of one member of the retirement board of the employees' retirement system.
Madam President?
Majority Leader, elections are now open for a member of the retirement board of the employees' retirement system. Majority Leader.
Madam President, I nominate James J. Lombardi III.
Second.
There's been a nomination and a second. Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please cast one ballot for James J. Lombardi III to serve on the retirement board of the employees' retirement system.
So noted.
Item four.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the read of item four and move approval.
Second, Madam President.
Any discussion on item four? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Item five.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the read of item five and six.
Second, Madam President.
Any discussion on items five or six? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Madam Clerk, please refer item five to the Committee on Finance and six, note as received.
So noted.
Item seven.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the read of item seven, substitute and pass for the second time on a roll call vote as amended.
Second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilwoman Anderbois.
Thank you so much, Council President. I rise again to support this and also to explain the amendment you have before you. Colleagues, we spent some time discussing this with the administration to ensure that this is something that could both pass and be implemented in a way that worked for our city. And so there have been a few minor changes, basically with dates. And so we're starting first with the city phase-out during the fall period. We're proving and showing to residents and businesses that the city is willing to go first and show that this is something that's possible. We're following that by the overall seasonal phase-out, which will begin in 2030. During the earlier phase-out, we'll be doing a lot of education as well. And then you'll see at the bottom, under violations, there's a change to show that there will be a number of instances of education before enforcement so that folks aren't surprised or given a fine that they aren't expecting. So we really do want this to be something that can be implemented, that people are doing. Not a gotcha, not a finger wag, just really actually phasing these out for all the reasons you've heard me drone on at prior meetings, which I won't bore you with today. We've also changed the department to Public Works. It just makes more sense for the Environment Department at Public Works to be handling this than DIS. And with that, I will not make you have to listen to me any longer, but I hope that you continue to support this and perhaps even more if you will support it now that the dates have been changed slightly and we have worked with the mayor on this. So thank you so much. I'm looking forward to this being implemented. And I think our neighbors who I hear from really regularly are really looking forward to this and we're gonna be a role model for the whole state. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion on item seven. Councilman Goncalves.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanna rise to thank my colleague for all of her hard work on this ordinance. It's been a long time coming. Been trying to get this done for a really long time. And ultimately, this is about protecting our air. It's about protecting our peace and our quality of life. And I know that my constituents are largely supportive of this measure. We've talked about this ad nauseum, but we know that gas-powered leaf blowers are ultimately polluting in our city. Using a gas-powered leaf blower for an hour is equivalent to 1,100 miles in a gas-powered vehicle. And so this is ultimately about protecting the workers who are basically inhaling some of these neurotoxic chemicals and the fine particulate matter. And this is a win, again, for workers, for quality of life, and for the residents of our city. And once again, I wanna thank Counselor Anderbois and all the members of their committee for the due diligence that they did on this ordinance and to make it the ordinance that we have before us today. So thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on item seven. Councilman Vargas.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I raise again that we have great ideas to create a negative business model. We just create laws and ordinance in this chamber, yes, that benefit the rich people and benefit the administration when the administration doesn't make no phone calls to the poor people who's surviving by doing this kind of business. And my point, my idea by doing this is taking the food out of the table and we just talking about food that we need, especially for these people. Some of them, they don't get help from the federal government. The only hope they get is get a leaf blower and go out there and work and make a day's meat. And then we come back again trying to do this by giving more time. Great. Five years from now, when they go out there to try to survive, they will say, who put this law here? Oh, the council. That's why I'm going, voting no in this ordinance. I don't wanna be in that books that I approve something that will make no sense or make a negative impact into the community. Technology is not here yet. It's coming. It's coming, but we need to wait for. And talking about wait, these batteries, they weigh more than 15 pounds. So the leaf blower is less weight, the gasoline power is less weight. But remember, if we allow, we are agreed to, for them to charge the batteries in the back outlet that you have for your battery car that you drive, will be great. I'd be glad to do that if we're ready yet, but that's a private property. That's why you pay into the leaf blowers to do, clean your leaves. And you don't want them to go into your property to plug the charger. Let's be fair, we're not ready yet. If the administration is willing to do this, the administration doesn't care about the community then. I'm sorry, that's the truth. They don't care about the minority, they don't care about the Latino people and the rest of the people who survive in this. And we, as a council, we should make laws that will help and benefit each person who lives in the city, each resident. Let's think about it. Don't put your name there because you wanna be famous. This is not to be famous. This is to represent the constituents, that they vote for us to be here.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion on item seven. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Council President Miller?
Aye.
Deputy Majority Whip Anderbois?
Aye.
Majority Leader Espinal?
Aye.
Senior Deputy Majority Leader Goncalves?
Aye.
Councilwoman Graves? Deputy Majority Leader Harris?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Pro Tempore Pichardo?
Nay.
Councilor Royas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan?
Aye.
Majority Whip Sanchez? Councilman Taylor is absent. Councilwoman Anna Vargas?
Is standing.
Councilman Oscar Vargas?
Nay.
You have nine ayes, three nays, one abstention, one absent. The motion carries. The matter is passed for the second time on a roll call vote as amended.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item eight, please.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the read of item eight and pass for the second time on a roll call vote.
Second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on item eight? Majority Whip Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. I really don't need to speak on this matter anymore, but I do just wanna share a lot of gratitude and recognition. We have some folks here from the community and our own para-board who've been very supportive of these amendments. At the end of the day, this is building trust and more accountability as public servants here in the city of Providence. We all have seen and continue to see, unfortunately, the horrific actions by our federal administration when it comes to immigration enforcement. And yeah, it's horrendous. And obviously, we can't do everything to stop that, but we can definitely do some things. And this definitely points us in that direction. Our call of asking our state courts to do virtual hearings is still loud and clear. That demand is very active in the community. So I would say that's the next measure that we should all be focusing our attention and energy and using our platforms for. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion on item eight? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Council President Miller?
Aye.
Deputy Majority Whip Anderbois?
Aye.
Majority Leader Espinal?
Aye.
Senior Deputy Majority Leader Goncalves?
Aye.
Councilwoman Graves? Deputy Majority Leader Harris?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Pro Tempore Pichardo?
Aye.
Councilor Royas?
A strong aye.
Councilwoman Ryan?
Aye.
Majority Whip Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor is absent. Councilwoman Anna Vargas?
Aye.
Councilman Oscar Vargas?
Aye.
You have thirteen ayes, one absent. The motion carries. The matter is approved for the second time on a roll call vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And thank you so much to everyone who's been part of this and is part of many things actively happening in the city right now. Item nine, please.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the read of item nine and pass for the second time on a roll call vote.
Second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on item nine? Hearing none. Councilman Anderbois.
I just wanted to share that I'm still really concerned that this ordinance is gonna create rat problems in our neighborhoods and also penalizes renters at the expense of landlords. And so I'm concerned. We haven't seen any changes or amendments since the last time. And I just, I still, we have real rat problems across the city and I think this is just gonna exacerbate that issue. So just wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion on item nine? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Council President Miller?
Aye.
Deputy Majority Whip Anderbois?
No.
Majority Leader Espinal?
Aye.
Senior Deputy Majority Leader Goncalves?
Aye.
Councilwoman Graves? Deputy Majority Leader Harris?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Pro Tempore Pichardo?
Aye.
Councilor Royas?
Nay.
Councilwoman Ryan?
Aye.
Majority Whip Sanchez?
Nay.
Councilman Taylor is absent. Councilwoman Anna Vargas?
Aye.
Councilman Oscar Vargas?
Aye.
You have ten ayes, three nays, one absent. The motion carries. The matter is passed for the second time on a roll call vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item 10.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the read of item 10 and 11.
Second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on items 10 or 11? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Madam Clerk, please refer item 10 to the Committee on Hope and item 11 to the Committee on Ordinances.
So noted.
Item 12.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the read of item 12 and pass on a voice vote.
Second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. At this time, I'd like to ask Madam Clerk to please read item 12.
Whereas Patricia Raub was a resident of the 14th Ward, and whereas a historian by trade, Ms. Raub documented the early history of Providence libraries in two journal articles in addition to her work in and teaching of American Studies, Popular Culture, Women's Studies, and American History. And whereas Ms. Raub was a dedicated advocate for Providence libraries, being one of the four founding members of the Community Libraries of Providence and a tireless advocate in person and in print for the support and flourishing of its neighborhood branches. And whereas Ms. Raub extended her care and concern, whether by her sympathy and get well soon cards for staff and library associates or by her constant affirming presence at the library events. And whereas Ms. Raub was also a board member and president of the Friends of Wanscott as well as co-chair of the Rhode Island Transit Riders and a critical organizer in the Janitors for Justice Movement in Providence in 2005. And whereas Ms. Raub, having died on October 29th, 2025, is remembered for her kindness, wit, and unwavering dedication and has created a legacy legible in every branch of the Community Libraries of Providence. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Providence City Council recognizes the life and committed advocacy of Patricia Raub. Be it further resolved that the City Council offers its most sincere condolences to her husband, Rob Goff, her family, her colleagues in library advocacy, and those who are motivated by her civic spirit. Be it further resolved that upon passage, copies of this resolution be transmitted to the family of Patricia Raub and to the Board of Directors of the Community Libraries of Providence.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion on item 12. Councilwoman Peterson.
Thank you. I don't actually know what to say because it's, it's, my heart still hurts. We've also suffered another great loss in the ward today, or yesterday, and so it's been a little difficult. But the ward did lose a great advocate and the city did lose a great advocate in Patricia Raub. And I just, today, the Wanscott, the Friends of Wanscott Library were meeting right at the same time that we were, or just a little bit earlier. And I had sent my heartfelt condolences to the group. And all I could say was really that Patricia was the quintessential community leader. She always advocated and supported for the things that needed it most. And her advocacy for our local libraries and our public transit, our public transit was actually how I was able to meet her. And when I knocked on her door and she looked at me kinda, why are you here? Kinda situation when I decided to run. And her cheerfulness and her kindness were the things that attracted me to her. And then we, when we started talking even more about the situation that was happening in our ward and the expansion, not only of college, but student housing, we found a commonality outside of the other things that she was an advocate for, to be able to do more for our community. If it wasn't for Patricia, we wouldn't have been able to receive the outreach from the Providence Preservation Society to be able to support our endeavor and just calling attention to what was happening in our ward. And I can't thank her enough for everything that she did for us. Like I said, we did lose a really great neighbor. And I, my heart goes out to her friends, her groups, and her, and her family. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Graves.
I knew Patricia for decades. We have been fighting for years for the library. She was one of the really strong ones that just kept going. She kept plotting. She was a quiet woman, but she had this inner strength. She could bring a lot of people together and make them feel comfortable and empowered. I remember when we decided to break away from the Providence Library and decide to become a community library. And it was because they were closing down so many of the small libraries. And every community needs a library. The libraries are meeting places. They're not just educational places, but they're places for people to come together, to talk to one another, to learn about each other, to learn about the area that they're in. The library is a second home to so many. And we, as a community, when we decided to do the community libraries, we still had one that was closed. We had to get that open. We had to do so many things to fight for it. And Patricia was always there. She got off the board, myself and I both, her and myself got off the board because we stayed on that board for a long time. But when they needed it, we both went back. I got back off, she got back off, but she went right back. She was always well-loved. She was always well-respected. And she always cared about not just Wanscott, but she cared about the whole city. She cared about every child in that city. She cared about all the elderly people. She cared about the people looking for jobs. She cared about the people that wanted, needed a bus pass. She cared about those that wanted a bike. She just cared. And it always came through. And she never put herself first. She was always concerned and worried about other people. You don't meet too many people like that anymore. It's, and she made you feel special. That was her gift. That was, and not all of us can do that, you know? Not all of us can sit down and talk to somebody and make them feel like they're, you're being heard. She let you know that whatever you were talking about, she was listening. She would come back and basically stare and say, oh, okay, so you want this, you need that, blah, 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 blah. Okay, well, what, what can I do? And she never asked for anything. She never asked for anything. She always gave and gave and gave. And in the few, the last few years, she's had several falls. And that last one, I think, really took a toll on her. But even then, if you saw her, she would still be concerned about you. And like I said, she is definitely gonna be missed. She was a one-of-a-kind. And I really don't have any more, I don't know what else we can say. I just know that she's up there with those angels because she definitely earned her place in heaven. A lot of us may not make it there, but she made it there.
Thank you, Counselor. Councilwoman Royas?
Thank you, Madam President. I won't be able to add too much to what my colleagues have said about Patricia Raub. I mean, I would just say that the obvious is that she was a giant in the city. I didn't have the privilege of representing her, you know, she lived in Ward 14. But, you know, my neighborhood received the benefits of her being such a staunch advocate of the Wanscott Public Library that Counsel Peterson and I share. And even, you know, even in her last days on Earth, she, she was such a staunch advocate of our Wanscott Library. I think what makes, obviously, we know why, and much of my colleagues have already stated, why public libraries are so important. I think even now, in this current landscape where our institutions are being attacked and libraries provide sort of this free flow of access to information, I can't think enough, I can't think enough of her advocacy around libraries and the benefit it plays, the benefit it has in my, has had in my neighborhood. And so I wanted to share those thoughts and, you know, my thoughts go out to her family. And I just hope that we have folks in this city that will carry the torch. And it's gonna be some big shoes to fill, but it's so necessary right now in this moment. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Councilman Goncalves?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanna thank my colleagues for all of their remarks. And I wanna thank Counselor Peterson for putting this in. I met Patricia a long time ago, I think when I was 50. I met Patricia a long time ago, I think when I was 15. Was working at the Boys and Girls Club, actually the Wanskaug Boys and Girls Club. And I was looking through, just impromptu, my, my emails and just all the exchanges that we've had over the years. And she, I think, as Counselor Roy has articulated, she was really a giant. And I think one of the things that we all benefited from, I know we've spoken about her, her contributions to the community libraries, but just how fierce of an advocate she was for the most vulnerable people in our community, particularly her work around Ripta and Transit Riders. And, I mean, you would see her out there fighting tooth and nail every single day, doing everything that it took to make sure that people were taken care of. And, you know, we're really gonna miss her. And I think it's just, it's critical that as a body and just as people, we just need to say thank you more because we never know when it's gonna be someone's day. And if I could look her in the face again, I would, I would just say thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Further, Councilwoman Anderbaugh.
I'll be quick. Thank you so much, Madam President, and to all my colleagues who spoke. I just wanted to add, so I learned about Patricia's passing from this resolution, which was a kind of a bummer way to find out. And co-sign everything everyone else just said. But I also wanted to remind folks that this body, a few years ago, passed a resolution unanimously opposing the moving of the Ripta Hub to the, what we were calling the Siberia location. And that was entirely due to Patricia Raub's really calm and rational advocacy, and really demanding that if the state wasn't gonna give her a voice, that someone was gonna give her that voice, and she asked the council to do so. And so our work has been directly influenced by, by her in the last couple of years. And she's such a role model, and I hope we all told her that while she was alive. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on item 12? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Counselors, I'm gonna do a thing I don't do that often and just ask for a point of personal expression. So I met Patricia Raub in the 2000s when there were, okay. So the janitors who were contracted to clean the buildings in downtown Providence were working at very low wages and very often, because they were the folks who went in to clean when everybody else left downtown, people didn't really know what was going on with them. There was a lot of abusive situations in the workplace. And we knew that to make a change for them, we were gonna have to make a lot of noise. And in those years, when I worked with Jobs of Justice and in partnership with SEIU and those, those workers, we asked people to come out and do so much stuff so many times in support, from like fasting in the streets to like sleeping out in front of City Hall for several days. Oh, there's a former city counselor I now see in the back, who was a big active part of that as well. But that's how I met, I was also still a nerd then. So I was like, I was like looking, you know, I had known that I had seen this person a few times, a lot of times, right? And I was looking, and I realized that Patricia Raub had not missed a single call that we did in support of the janitors. And so I brought, I didn't know her, I didn't know her background. I didn't know the kind of organizer or historian she was. I asked her to come and, and meet and, and sit with some of the workers. And it was like, I mean, like, once I talked to her a little bit more, it was amazing. She was never asked for recognition in any way, was a remarkable human person who kind of shared in action what solidarity was like, you know? And then in 2009, when the main branch of the library was really threatening its workers, was threatening the community branches, I was so proud to stand with her as we did, you know, pickets in support of the workers. And I am 100% sure that both the strength of the main branch and the vibrancy of the community branches is because of her dedication and yours, Councilwoman, and many others. And so I just want to thank everyone for appointing her several times to the Community Library Board and wish all of, all of our, our thoughts and good wishes to her family and to the board because I know they miss her a lot. But thank you. Item 13.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading of item 13.
Second Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on item 13? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Madam Clerk, please refer item 13 to the Committee on City Property. So noted. Item 14.
Madam President, motion to weigh the reading of item 14 and pass on a voice vote.
Second Madam President.
That was, yeah, may I ask the Majority Leader to withdraw and refer?
I will withdraw and refer.
I withdraw my second.
Okay, so a motion to waive the reading and pass on, and refer to the Committee on Finance, please.
Right. Motion to weigh the reading of item 14 and refer to Finance.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Madam Clerk, please refer item 14 to the Committee on Finance. So noted. Item 15.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading of item 15 and pass on a voice vote.
Second Madam President.
We have a motion and a second.
Madam President, may the clerk read.
Please. May you please read item 15, Madam Clerk.
Whereas Eugenio Fernandez Jr., Farm D., is a proud son of Providence, a graduate of Classical High School, and a pharmacist practicing in the 11th Ward. And whereas, an undergraduate and graduate alumnus of the University of Rhode Island, Dr. Fernandez owns and operates Esthenus, an independent pharmacy prioritizing patient education and empowerment. And whereas, as profiled by the New York Times, the Boston Globe, the Providence Journal, National Public Radio, and the Associated Press, among other outlets, Esthenus also functions as a community health hub, providing patients sound information, support in healthcare access, free immunization services, and health screenings. And whereas, during the COVID-19 pandemic, Dr. Fernandez partnered with the city alongside more than 100 organizations to provide COVID-19 screenings and to administer 50,000 doses of COVID-19 vaccine, both in Providence and across Rhode Island. And whereas, commensurate with his belief in systemic change that supports community flourishing, Dr. Fernandez also sits on a number of boards, including those of Crossroads Rhode Island, the State of Rhode Island Health Insurance Advisory Council, the Care Transformation Collaborative Rhode Island, and Grow Smart Rhode Island. And whereas, in conjunction for his considerable and continuing achievement in public health, the Harvard University TH Chan School of Public Health has conferred upon Dr. Fernandez, also an alumnus, its Public Health Innovator Award. And whereas, Dr. Fernandez was presented with the key to the city by former Mayor Jorge Alorsa in 2022. And whereas, the Providence City Council wishes to convey its sincere gratitude for the work of Dr. Fernandez, his practice, and of all working diligently in the health professions across Providence. Now therefore be it resolved that the Providence City Council congratulates Dr. Eugenio Fernandez Jr. on his remarkable achievements and celebrates his holistic commitment to the well-being of the residents of Providence. And be it further resolved that upon passage, copies of this resolution be delivered to Dr. Eugenio Fernandez and to Esthenus Pharmacy.
Councilwoman, please.
I rise today because many times we have been able to recognize a lot of great leaders around the city of Providence. That's what's great about being in the position that we're in. We're able to be able to see and recognize folks that normally we wouldn't know if we wouldn't have been together here, and being able to introduce different people. I rise tonight with greeting not only to the council members, but to the members of the community. Tonight, I actually helped me recognize a person whose dedication and compassion and quiet leadership have made a life of changing differences in the, to the people of the city. He, he, I'm gonna mess his name up. Eugenio?
Eugenio.
Eugenio Fernandez, will I call you, you know? Dr. Fernandez chose to build his practice not in the spotlight of private clinics, but in the heart of one of our most marginalized neighborhoods, Ward 11. He made that choice deliberately to be where he could care, where the care is needed most. Day after day, he welcomes every patient with attention, respect, and skill, treating each person not as a number, but as a neighbor deserving dignity and hope. Beyond clinical care, Dr. Fernandez is a teacher. He takes time to educate patients and families about their health, helping them understand how to manage illness, prevent complications, and assess services. When barriers arise, transportation costs, or mobility, he and his family have gone the extra mile, personally delivering medication for patients who cannot get to the pharmacy. That is service without fanfare, is compassion made practical. Throughout his career, Dr. Fernandez has carried himself with a rare combination of professionalism and humanity. He does not seek attention or praise, yet his work has lifted lives and strengthened our community in ways that deserve public recognition. When our nation faced immense challenges of COVID-19 pandemic, Dr. Fernandez stepped forward again. He advocated tirelessly for the poorest and the most vulnerable to receive tests and treatments and vaccinations. In a time of fear and uncertainty, he was steady, persistent, and brave, making sure that public health response reached those often left behind. And for these reasons, for choosing to serve where help is most needed, for educating and empowering patients, for delivering care and medicine to the homebound, for leading with humility and arrogance, for advocating for equity during the pandemic, there is no one more fitting to receive the city official recognition that we're doing tonight. Although, although Dr. Fernandez was not able to attend tonight, I ask that his mother and his sister, who are just his strong arm, please stand and be acknowledged by our council members here. I say that because they stand hand in hand with our Dr. Fernandez, also delivering medicine, also looking out for patients, also being there with him as a strong binding. So we really appreciate having such a person in our community, in our city. We really appreciate having him, and we love him, and the council really appreciate him. And tonight, we will pass this resolution because he's a great man and he deserve it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Further discussion on item 15? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. Madam Clerk, item 16.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading of items 16 and 17.
Second Madam President.
Any discussion on item 16 and 17? Hearing, oh, Councilwoman Peterson?
Wasn't quite paying attention. With regards to the resolution in number 16, I just wanted to quickly explain my thought process and the way we got here. I had a lovely group of mixed age, mixed ward, members of the Providence community reach out and ask for coffee one day. And as I got to know them, none of them by, just, none of them were from my word. But one of the things that had come up in, that we all shared a commonality about was that we all had some sort of a, of an illness that could at some point cause us to have accessibility or mobility issues. And one of the things that they had some camaraderie around was the fact that, while we have many handicap spaces in our city, sometimes as people continue to utilize their vehicles, the access to being able to utilize a mobility device when coming out of a vehicle is, it's much harder. And so we got to talking, and I think one of the great things that we were able to kind of rally around was that there was an opportunity here to do some more research to be able to get us to a point where we could see what we could do about it. One of the things that I think is really important for us as a, as a city is that we mobilize to meet people where they're at. We've done a really great job of doing that with this particular council. And I think that we can do so much more in terms of accessibility for our neighbors, the tourists that come here, and just in general for the, for the people that utilize the city for, for a multitude of things. But this is just an opportunity for us to do some research, to really understand what it would take, and then to hopefully in the future be able to put it into our community investment plan, which is something that we should absolutely be considering for all of the improvements that we want for our communities. So that's it. I hope you guys support. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on item 16 or 17? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Madam Clerk, please refer 16 to the Committee on Public Works and 17 to the Committee on Finance. So noted. Item 18.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading of item 18, and withdraw at the request of the sponsor.
Second Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Item 19.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading of item 19.
Second Madam President.
Any discussion on item 19? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Please refer item 19 to the Committee on Public Works. So noted. Item 20.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading of item 20 through 22 and pass for the first time in a roll call vote.
Second.
Any discussion on items 20 through 22? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Council President Miller?
Aye.
Deputy Majority Whip Anderbaugh? Is apparent. Majority Leader Espinal?
Aye.
Senior Deputy Majority Leader Goncalves?
Aye.
Councilwoman Graves? Deputy Majority Leader Harris?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peterson? Council President Pro Tempore Pichardo?
Aye.
Councilor Royas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan?
Aye.
Majority Whip Sanchez? Councilman Taylor is absent. Councilwoman Ana Vargas?
Aye.
Councilman Oscar Vargas?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, sorry, stepped out for a second.
So noted. You have 13 ayes, one absent. The motion carries. The matters are approved for the first time on a roll call vote. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item 23.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading of item 23 and send back to comedian ordinance.
Second Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on item 23? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Please refer item 23 back to the Committee on Ordinances. Item 24.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading of item 24 and 25 and pass for the first time in a roll call vote.
Second Madam President.
Any discussion on items 24 and 25? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Council President Miller?
Aye.
Deputy Majority Whip Anderbaugh? Majority Leader Espinal?
Aye.
Senior Deputy Majority Leader Goncalves?
Aye.
Councilwoman Graves? Deputy Majority Leader Harris?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Pro Tempore Pichardo?
Aye.
Councilor Royas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan?
Aye.
Majority Whip Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor is absent. Councilwoman Ana Vargas?
Aye.
Councilman Oscar Vargas?
Aye.
You have 13 ayes, one absent. The motion carries. The matters are passed for the first time on a roll call vote. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item 26.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading of item 26 and pass on a roll call vote.
Second Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on item 26? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Council President Miller?
Aye.
Deputy Majority Whip Anderbaugh? Majority Leader Espinal?
Aye.
Senior Deputy Majority Leader Goncalves?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilwoman Graves. Deputy Majority Leader Harris.
Aye.
Councilwoman Peterson.
Aye.
Council President Pro Tempore Pichardo.
Aye.
Councilor Royas. Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Majority Whip Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor is absent. Councilwoman Anna Vargas.
Aye.
Councilman Oscar Vargas.
Aye.
You have 13 ayes, one absent. The motion carries. The matters passed on a roll call vote.
Thank you. Item 27.
Madam President.
Majority Leader.
Want you to weigh the reading of item 27 and pass for the first time in a roll call vote.
Second Madam President.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on item 27? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Council President Miller.
Aye.
Deputy Majority Whip Vanderboeck. Majority Leader Espinal.
Aye.
Senior Deputy Majority Leader Goncalves.
Aye.
Councilwoman Graves. Deputy Majority Leader Harris.
Aye.
Councilwoman Peterson. Council President Pro Tempore Pichardo.
Aye.
Councilor Royas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Majority Whip Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor is absent. Councilwoman Anna Vargas.
Aye.
Councilman Oscar Vargas.
Aye.
You have 13 ayes, one absent. The motion carries. The matters passed for the first time on a roll call vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item 28.
Madam President.
Majority Leader.
Want you to weigh the reading of item 28 on deny without prejudice.
Second Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Chairwoman Ryan.
Thank you, Madam President. I just rise to offer a point of clarification. The Finance Committee denied this without prejudice. We ran out of time to be able to hear him. We had some scheduling issues. It's no reflection on the candidate. This action actually keeps the appointment live, and as a matter of fact, we already referred this item, item five, it came back in to finance, so we'll hear it again. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion on item 28? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item 29.
Madam President.
Majority Leader.
Want you to weigh the reading of item 29 through 35.
Second Madam President.
Any discussion on item 29 through 35? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Madam Clerk, item 29 to the Committee on Ordinances, please. 30 and 31, refer to the Committee on Claims and Pending Suits. 32, 33, note as received. 34, please refer to the Committee on Finance. And 35, note as received. So noted. Thank you. Item 36.
Madam President, point of personal expression.
Councilwoman Sanchez.
Thank you. So I'm sure you guys are all very aware, but I just wanted to rise to shine some attention on this very dangerous and unfortunate situation of SNAP benefits being on pause in our communities. I do want to first start off by recognizing and thanking the city administration and countless partners across the state of Rhode Island for stepping up. A big shout out to our Solicitor's Office has been very involved for filing lawsuits in federal court to try to stop, to try to reactivate some of those benefits. You guys are all very aware, I know a lot of you have stepped up in your own communities, whether that's with the food bank or the different church groups or different libraries even, Mount Pleasant Library has a food pantry. There's so many opportunities and the demand is high. The really heartbreaking part of it is when you see how many children are affected. People and our families are struggling as is before already with the high cost of groceries. So this pause and this disastrous decision by our federal government is having real-life implications to a lot of families in our neighborhood. I have a few families in my neighborhood that have reached out and shared very sad stories about this, that they unfortunately had to pick between food on table or rent this month. People that are living paycheck to paycheck that are already in debt with their landlords. So my big ask is to keep doing what we can as a local legislative body. I know there's talks of us pulling some money for local resources, so I definitely would like to see something of that nature happen. The City of Providence has already committed $25,000 to the Rhode Island Food Bank to keep that pressure and that level of assistance and awareness. Obviously, try to engage as much as possible with our federal delegation when it comes to this issue, because this is really, really unfortunate. I think one in four of our students in our school district rely on this very important benefit. But yeah, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to take some time to elevate this very pressing concern.
Thank you, Counselor. Councilman Goncalves?
Thank you, Counselor Sanchez, for saying those remarks.
Councilman, point of personal expression?
Yes, point of personal expression. And the reason why I wanted to follow that is because I think that oftentimes people look at the East Side as a monolith, and I do want to let everybody know across the city that there is tremendous need out there. The number of calls that I've received on this issue and what we're doing to replicate what is happening in Mount Pleasant, and I know Councilwoman Graves and also Councilwoman Ryan, there have been a lot of great things that you've done in your respective wards. And I just want to give a couple of anecdotes without sharing too much about these constituents, but you know, when this situation happened and it's been unfolding before our eyes, I've heard from so many people, and these are people in Fox Point, for example, and one of the things that I'm often very struck by is the fact that even on the East Side, you know, people, they're going about their day to day, and they have no clue that these people exist in their own backyard. And I think it's really, really important that we continue to elevate their stories because it's really affecting people in our city. And one anecdote that I want to share too was, so I was speaking to someone about this issue and what we're going to do at the Fox Point Library to help set up a food pantry modeled after what's happening in Mount Pleasant, and someone was sharing a story about a young child who was basically stuffing food in their backpacks, and they asked the child, like, "What's the reason for you doing that? Like, there's plenty of food here." And the child responded, "It's for my mom, because I don't want my mom to go hungry." And it's just so heartbreaking to think about what our federal government is doing when people literally cannot put food on the table. It's dehumanizing, it's incredibly abhorrent, and regardless of where you are in the city, whether it's the East Side or the South Side, or people who think that the East Side is a monolith and everyone has means there, I just want people to remember that there are people in our community who are being impacted by the cruelty of the federal government and the Trump administration. And so, I want to thank this council, this body, thank our city for stepping up and protecting our people, particularly our most marginalized and vulnerable when they need it most. And I just want to share some of those anecdotes because, again, I think we sometimes often forget the amount of need that exists in our community, and the struggle is real. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Royas.
Madam President.
Councilwoman Royas first, yep.
Thank you, Madam President. Point of personal expression?
Yes, sir.
I think this might be the first time I've used that. This is not germane to SNAP, but so could I? Okay.
A point of personal expression.
Thank you. I just wanted, just to be sure. Before we conclude tonight, I just want to mention that there was a tragic death in my neighborhood, a resident of Metcalf Courts. His name was Michael Demala, and he had passed away tragically due to a, what I would describe as traffic violence on Branch Ave. He was 78 years old, and I just think this speaks to how unprepared and paralyzed we are as a city to really implement a safety infrastructure that our residents have desperately demanded of us, and we are so, we are so late to the game, and unfortunately, the cost of that is lives. And it doesn't have to be this way. This is a result of indecisions made by our city, and I'm not blaming any one person in city government. As a collective, we need to get our act together. If I'm mistaken, this is the second death in our city related to traffic violence. And so, I...
On that intersection?
Yeah. And so, my thoughts are with Michael. I had attended his funeral on Tuesday, and it's devastating. And so, I just, while I have you all in this chamber, I kind of just want to emphasize that and get your support, that we really need to make sure that our streets are safe for our pedestrians when it comes to all modes of transportation. Michael's family deserves that, and everyone, and Michael deserved to live his last days in peace and safety, and it angers me that this happened. So, just want to share that before we conclude. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. President Pro Tempore Pichardo.
Point of expression, Madam President?
Please.
Yes. Thank you. I too rise to express the extreme concern from our community as we've been calling it out, that we're in the middle of a tremendous storm and hurricane, especially when it comes to relying on the federal government. And I wanted to rise on a couple of things. One is that commend the City of Providence through the administration of the mayor and also Mayor Brett Smiley and administration, but also the Central Falls administration, Maria Rivera, and the attorneys that came together and put a case to ensure that the food stamps that are so important to our communities and the most vulnerable. And as it was, we stood there with the mayor and with the mayors and others that brought the case before the federal court. That afternoon, we got the partial news. But we know that it's only been 10 months, that these things are going to continue to test our endurance and also our city and our state. Not only are families being affected at every level. I know we stand up here, just like any elected officials and concerned members of our city and our states, that we want our families to be taken care of, and particularly when it comes to children. I rise also because this, another example of not just only vulnerable kids, but also those of us who have family members in the military that continue to struggle. As we're going into Veterans Day, which is Tuesday, September 13th, and today, we're going to be having the ceremony here, is to remind us that we have to continue to stand together, to show up. And we all know that we care. I often say, "We all care. We're good people." But we got to care enough to show up, to show up to things and that are important, to send a message to our state leaders, to our federal delegation, but also to the President. I don't have to go down that road because we already know that we will continue to fight back, as Councilwoman Graves was indicating. That's how we got here to the City Chamber. We have to continue to fight to ensure that our families are stable in our own home through that affordable housing, but also to ensure that these next five or six years are going to be very difficult for the working family, especially the working poor. And we all could say our own personal stories, how we were born poor, we were on Medicaid, on food stamps, we sometimes even know that we were on food stamps when we were growing up. And so, those of us who are a little bit more privileged, that we have a higher education and that live in a house, that we have to ensure that we all show up for one another. And with that said, Madam President, I also want to extend a gratitude of acceptance and their service. I recently just joined the Lions Club of Providence, which also is the Lions, the Lions Club International, which is an entity of service to those communities who are vulnerable. They raise money to ensure that no one falls through the cracks. And at this time, I would like to just call a couple of names that I saw that are here that are going to be joining us later on with our program for veterans. We have Luis De Rio, who served in the, one of our own. He served 37 years in the Providence Police, and now he's been providing service continuously in the Lions Club. We have Mike Reyes, another fine gentleman in our state. Nelson Valdivia, who I believe he's going to be joining us or probably going to be joining us, who's also a former Providence Police, led by Catherine Ritter-Smith. And I see also the doctor who provides free eye care service for any child who needs them, free throughout our state. That's with the Lions Club, and I wanted to commend them for their service and continuing service, and welcome you to the Providence City Council Chambers. And then, lastly, to all my colleagues, as every year we do, at least for the past three years, immediately after this, we're going to have a ceremony honoring the moment of celebrating those who serve, the veterans. I've often say that in our districts, we have a responsibility to all, and when we see veterans who have been forgotten to a certain extent, when we see the square, when we see the opportunities that we can help them, yes, we don't ask, "Were you in the military? Were you a veteran?" and so forth, we just provide the service. But we all know that we have to keep an eye out for the families and those who are most vulnerable in the City of Providence. So, I ask you to join us at the end of this program for the veteran celebration at 7:15. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President. Point of personal expression.
Please.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Well, first of all, I want to extend my condolences to Councilor Royas constituents, and also thank Councilman Pichardo for putting the veteran celebration together. I also want to second and also support the comments already made by my colleagues pertaining to the situation that we're in today, where there's so many people that are going hungry. But I do also want to rise to recognize one of my constituents who did something which I think is just exceptional, and I read it on Facebook, and I think that that's just wonderful. And this goes to Sandra Castro, who lives on Car Street. And I'll read the small Facebook post. She created a food pantry on her porch in front of her house, and I see all unique items here that are needed. And it says, "Car Street Food Pantry. Come and take what you need. And if you're able to donate, please leave some items." This is right in front of her house. So it goes to show that in times of need, necessity, and critical times like this, it brings the best out of people, and I just wanted to highlight her. That is very creative, it's very innovative, and I'm thankful to Sandra Castro, so she's watching, I'm really grateful for her. Thank you, Sandra.
Thank you, Majority Leader.
Madam President.
Councilwoman Peterson.
If I could just have a point of personal expression myself.
I, to echo everything that's being said, one of the things that I wanted to do was actually recognize an organization, but also a community member in my ward who is always going above and beyond in many different ways, but this is something that, to me, is really important as we're discussing all of the things and trying to support our neighbors in the very best way that we can. in the very best way that we can. You know, I think we've all shared or heard the stories of our community organizations like Higher Ground, like Smith Hill Alumni Association, and so many others, just trying to do the very best to try and give a little bit more. And the organization, excuse me, the organization, the Global Fund to End Childhood Hunger and Poverty, founded by Ms. Marcia Wranglin Vassal, was able to collect money to put, to donate to local school food pantries, and that's something that, to me, is unbelievably important because we know that our students go to school and sometimes only have those meals. And much to what my colleague had said, so many need to be able to go home with something because they're looking after somebody or have a family member that doesn't get to benefit from that. So I just wanted to highlight the most important, this really important opportunity that is going to be presented to all of these schools next week, and the donation is going to many schools in our neighborhoods, Central High School, Nathaniel Green Middle School, A Venture, E-Cubed Academy, Dr. Martin Luther King, VZ Street Elementary, and Thornton Elementary. All of those schools are going to be able to receive this donation to their food pantry to be able to support our students and their families there. So I just wanted to say a big thank you to that, to Ms. Marcia, and also to that Board of Directors for really helping out, and to everybody that donated. Never quite realize when you're going to need those things immediately, and it's front and center what we need to do for our communities right now. So everybody that's pitching in, I just wanted to say a big thank you, especially in my community, who they have stepped up in so many ways for all of our neighbors. I can't thank you enough.
Thank you. Counselwoman Graves?
I hate to drag it on. I, too, want to...
A personal expression.
Personal? I'm sorry, I always forget. Um, I want to give some recognition to just Ward 12 in general. At my meeting, or right before my community meeting, I had asked people to bring food in to the meeting, and they did. And we decided to adopt Capitol City Food Pantry. We dropped off our first load, and we filled the van, and that was just from one site. So on Monday, we plan on doing it again. Smith Hill Library has stepped to the plate, they always do, you know. Wally and Shippey have stepped to the plate, they always do. Mike down at the Recreation Center has stepped to the plate, always does. So, but the ones that I really, you know, these are groups of people, but the ones I really want to give recognition to are the ones that are going through something themselves, yet they still looked on their shelf and said, "Okay, I got two boxes of spaghetti. Let me give this one." Because we are, we always can recognize the ones that stepped to the plate or the ones that, you know, can, and I always see that. But we never recognize those quiet ones, the ones in the background that give when they don't have much to give. And I want to recognize the city as a whole because I see, I see people reaching out, I see people trying their best to help one another. And that's what I was trying to get at earlier. We have to do that. And the fact that we have enough stories going around here that we can all say about our communities is fabulous, and we need to keep doing this because, unfortunately, we all know we got a whole nother year of yours, President, and who knows what other Senanigans he's going to come up with? And we just have to be diligent. But I also want you guys to be aware of other things that are falling, you know, to the wayside. People are not being, they have, this is the time that the PHA and all these other places want to sign those people back up, and they have to have certain documentation in order for them supposedly to stay in their apartments. So we need to make sure that nobody gets kicked out of their apartment because they cannot be certified, because they are not getting all the information that they need to be getting from the federal government. I don't know what we, as a city, can do, but I've spoken to people at PHA in Carol Towes and Chad Brown, I think we all need to just reach out and speak and say, "Look, you know what's going on. This is the time for us not to be looking for money. This is the time for us to be looking out for one another." So just keep up the good work, and God bless all that have given, because if it's coming from the heart, that's when it's really meaningful. And it doesn't have to be any, please tell everybody, it doesn't have to be a lot of money. I gave $500 from the city, but you got it all, but that's from the city. I got to also give for myself. So we need to also look at each within ourselves. Look at that man in that mirror and say, "What can I do?" And continue to do it. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Hello?
Councilwoman Argus.
Hi.
Yes.
Okay. Fine? Oh, point is a special, okay. I don't know that.
Yes.
Yes. I know the situation, because we have the food stamp for the senior, for everybody. But in my community, we had the celebration for that giving. I know we had another meeting, but I would like, you know, because everybody can be together and have, you know, very good meal, because that's always for the recreation. The 21st, we had the Thanksgiving dinners in my area, in my words. So, so you know anything, please, we can be together and we can do something bigger and then giving food away. And I want to say thank you for the city for that support, and the Recreation Center, too. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselman interrupt?
Really quick point of personal expression, and it's just because I just saw him walk in. Caleb, our City Archivist, did an amazing job yesterday at our 250 celebration for America's anniversary, is not the right way to say that. He gave, yeah, thank you. But he gave a really wonderful speech after Secretary of State Greg Amore talking about the city and our history, and I just really wanted to recognize him, since many of us couldn't be there yesterday, but I saw him, and he did a really fantastic job. So, thank you, Caleb.
Thank you so much, Counselor. Item 36.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the review out of 36 and pass in a voice vote.
Second, Madam President.
Discussion on item 36, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, the motion passes. Item 37.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the review out of 37 and pass in a unanimous rising vote.
Second, Madam President.
Any discussion on item 37? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, the motion passes.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
And that's no further business than the calendar. Tonight, we will be adjourning in the name of Patricia Robb, Robert De Maskill, William Billy Johnson, Willan Glover, Jeanne De Lulo, longtime resident of Ward 5, and a former member of the Democratic City Committee for Ward 5. And she's also Councilwoman Joanne Ryan, brother-in-law's mother. Our condolences to all of them. Motion to adjourn.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Please stick around and join us for our veteran celebration. Thank you all.